I call the meeting of the Board of Appeals on Zoning to order. And first order of business will be roll call.
Brandell Adams.
Present.
Dennis Browning.
Present.
George Copeland.
Present.
Bruce Gale.
Present.
And Jack Nash.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the March 3, 2021.
So moved.
Minutes.
So moved.
Been moved in support. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any conditions? Corrections? If not, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next we have is approval of the agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Is there any other discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Being none, agenda is approved. At this point, we come to the public comment. Is that correct? Thank you, President. Is that where I read my little statement? No. I don't do that until the...
I believe so.
Under new business, right? We don't do that until under the...
Yep.
New business. So is there any public comment? Go ahead, say, is there any public comment? Second time, any public comment? Third and final time, is there any comments from the public? I think I need a motion then to close the public comment section. No, we don't?
Don't need that.
Not further than the agenda?
No, just move forward.
It's like public input for council.
Oh, okay. All right. Sounds good. We're on the new business then. And prior to going into our new business, we have two projects that are before the board. And I have some introduction statement that we need to read. Good evening. I am Chairman Dennis Browning of the Board of Zoning, Board of Appeals on Zoning. The function of the board is to provide zoning flexibility. The action of the board can be an interpretation, which involves an interpretation of the zoning code text or a zoning district boundary. We may also issue a variance, which is an appeal to vary from the strict application of the zoning code. The meeting is videotaped. It is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. When the appeal in which you are interested is called, please come forward to the podium and allow the board a moment to review the material, which you have been given, after which you may give your name and address to the secretary. After the appellant's presentation, anyone interested in the appeal may come forward, give his or her name and address to the secretary. Please make your comments brief and to the point. All questions should be directed to the board and not to the appellant. The board will discuss the appeal, vote, and continue to the next appeal. An affirmative vote of two-thirds of the board shall be necessary to decide in favor of the appeal. The action of the board is final. The only relief is through the courts. Please be advised the use and termination dimensional variances expire in six months from the date of this meeting. Okay. Well, at this time, we'll call the, have the secretary call the first appeal and a brief explanation.
Sure. So, this evening, we're considering J-21-0084. It's a waiver on the separation distances from a retail marijuana establishment for 2205 North Michigan Avenue. The project involves the construction of a new facility, and the distance from another facility that was granted a special use permit is closer than the required 500-foot variance. So the appellant is asking for a waiver on that 500-foot development.
Okay. And do we have someone here to appear about that? You want to start off with giving us your name and address for the secretary, please?
Yeah. Louis Meeks, and my address is 7746 Hidden Ridge Lane. That's in Northville.
Okay. Would you like to speak on behalf of what you're requesting?
Yeah, happy to. Yeah, so we have, back on February 23 of 2021, we received our special use permit for 2205 North Michigan, and we have a plan to invest $1.5 million. We're gonna, you know, get rid of that existing structure, if you've seen it. It's right at the end of, right at the exit of 675, so I think it's a real eyesore coming into the city off that exit, and so we're super excited to tear that down. Everything's gonna get remediated, as it was a 60, 70-year-old gas station, and we have the plans in place, and we're excited to really do something very special with the look and feel of the facility and be first class all the way. And, you know, I think what, you know, part of our, you know, the basis for wanting a variance is, you know, the vast majority of communities within Michigan, when you apply for a marijuana permit, you know, if you're given that special use permit, first in line, that's what normally creates the buffer. And then, so, you know, in that scenario, typically, you know, then we would buffer out everybody else at that point in time, so that the other person who came after us and was granted their special use permit, we would have buffered them out. Now, you know, that stated, because, you know, your ordinance is your ordinance, and we live within the rules of every municipality that we work within, you know, the fact is that, you know, we have a ton of work for ours to tear down a building and then remediate and then rebuild from scratch, where distinct disadvantage, because your buffers are actually created when the state gives their final approval to open the dispensary. And so since our project is gonna take probably a year to get through that construction process and get state approvals, unlike the one that a competitor of ours are taking on half of an existing print shop, so it's an existing structure that all they need to do is just, you know, take possession, do some renovations, you know, then apply for their state permit, so we would have zero chance of beating them to the first state permit. So we would risk investing a million five into this project, and they get to open first, and we become a rib shop, which would be great, because we could use another Big O's ribs in Saginaw. But we prefer to be in the marijuana industry. That's where our specialty is. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else? Do I ask that this time, anyone else that wants to speak on this project? Anyone else?
More questions for you.
And we can go ahead and do some questions.
After the public hearing is closed and there's a motion.
Okay. We have to close it. We close public hearing, and then we go into our discussions, is that correct?
You would close the public hearing, and then you would have a motion.
Okay, sure. For discussions.
On the matter.
Sure.
But no questions now?
As soon as the motion and a second is made, then you can do questions and discussion. The public hearing is strictly for the public to comment.
So this is the public hearing for case number J-21-0084. Is there anyone else to speak during the public hearing on this site at 2205 North Michigan? Second time, is there anyone else to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that you received in your packet a letter from Northmore Neighborhood Association regarding this.
Yep. Board members, you all have received that and have knowledge of that? Good. Third and last time, is there anyone else to speak, reference our case number J-21-0084, reference a retail marijuana establishment at 2205 North Michigan? Being none, I need a motion to close the public hearing on this?
So moved.
Support.
Been moved in support. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries then. Now, were there any questions? We can go...
You should do a motion to approve first.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We need a motion to approve. To approve a waiver of the separation distance from another retail marijuana establishment for 2205 North Michigan. We need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Now, we can discuss?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions for the presenter? Any questions for our...
I have one for the attorney. Am I able to do that this time?
Absolutely.
Okay. My question for our attorney is, if I understand correctly, if this is to, if the motion or the waiver is approved, it would still go according to the establishment that has received their license, that is up, ready to go, that will receive their license from the city to determine who would have the operating business in the city?
So if the variance were approved this evening, effectively, it would allow for 2205 North Michigan to open their retail establishment regardless if the other prospective retail establishment opens before them.
Okay.
So even if that other establishment got up and running, opened their doors before them, which effectively then establishes the setback, they have the variance from that setback requirement.
I have a question for the attorney.
Sure.
It was said that other municipalities wrote their ordinances in a way that as soon as, you know, they applied and started building, that's when the buffer was created. Why did we decide to go with, when they get their license from the state, that's when the buffer is created?
Our ordinance provides that the buffer is created, well, what our ordinance really says is that there's a buffer of 500 feet between marijuana establishments. To be a marijuana establishment, you have to be fully licensed.
And neither of these are fully licensed. Neither of these are fully licensed.
They currently have their provisional license. It's kind of a four-step process to become a fully licensed marijuana establishment in the city. First or second, it doesn't really matter which order they go in, they need to apply for a special use permit from the planning commission, as well as apply for their business license with the city clerk. After doing that, upon receiving a provisional license and getting their SUP approval, they would then go through all the processes and steps that they have to do to fulfill their state requirements and end up with a state license. Once they're issued that state license, it should be, in theory, a very quick turnaround to come back, say, hey, I've met all the requirements, and the city license then issued.
I understand that we're asking for a variance for 2205.
Correct.
And if 2205 was to operate first and obtain that license, would then the other business down the road have to apply for a variance?
I believe they would.
From what he says, though, there's no way he can get his building done in a time manner.
This is, yeah, this is a question for staff. So where does, what does the Northmore, where is the Northmore area in the city?
It would be that neighborhood to the east.
They're looking...
I'm sorry, to the west of...
It's gotta be to the west, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
The east is the river.
Do you know what the boundaries for Northmore is currently?
I don't know what the boundaries are, but the neighborhood is...
Oakley, I mean, do they, I have no clue. Yeah.
Sorry.
My question for Mr. Meeks is, how far in the state process are you all?
Well, we have multiple facilities throughout the state, so we're continuously working with the MRA, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency at the state. But right now, what we've done is we've had our, all of our building plans, we had, we went through the SAG&amp;O engineering, got approvals there, went through the planning commission, got the special use permit. So once we got all that, and all the architectural drawings have been created, the site plan that shows all the parking and everything related to the project, we have everything ready to go there. Now, we just hit the brakes until we got this variance. Once we, if we're lucky enough, fortunate enough to get the variance, then we'll move quickly to going right through the build process. So get all the permits to tear down the building, remediate the property. There were, used to be, you know, gas tanks there, because it was a gas station, obviously. So we'll just begin to get open as quickly as possible, probably, and hope to get open probably in May or June of next year.
Right.
And if you'd like for me to approach, I pulled up the map showing the borders of the Northmore.
Yeah, please. Please.
And for the staff, do we have any information regarding this other location, where they are, or anything like that? No, no one?
Right next to the bar.
Well, oh, no. What I meant by, do we have any updates on how far they are in the process?
All the way to town.
They're just remodeling this.
They go all the way to town.
And it's not a, his building will be attractive. The other one is not a real, it's not an eyesore, but it's not a stunning building. I would like to see a stunning building coming off 675.
More to your point, I feel like it would be a race to the bottom as far as investment in the city. If they're gonna be racing to get it open, let's just slap some paint on it and get it open. Anyone who seriously wants to invest in their, in their location and make it beautiful...
Exactly. Exactly.
This is a question for staff. In regards to bars, is there a buffer zone in the city?
Between two bars?
No. Is there a buffer zone between drugstores in the city?
No.
Okay.
Did you say liquor stores? Because that's where I was gonna, I was gonna ask that. Is there a buffer zone? Between liquor stores?
I don't think liquor stores either.
Commissioner Copeland, I want to answer your question. They are, they have received their engineering review letter. They have not received a provisional license as of today.
Okay.
Yet.
And also, they've already been before city planning with this project.
Gotcha. And to the staff, if this, if this is approved, this variance, which narrows the distance between establishments, does this then set a precedent in the future? Because if 2205 is asking for a variance and it's granted, would it then be likely that 23 comes back, 2301 would come back? Because they would have to ask for a variance. And if you, and if you approve it for one, you got to prove it for the other. I mean...
I think this is a case where you need to state your reasoning very clearly, because that would eliminate the precedence. This is, each one is going to be unique.
There's a potential reasonings for why this hardship is caused.
I don't think that it's just because somebody owns a property and somebody else owns a property, and they both want to do marijuana retailers.
But, but, I understand the hardship on this one here, on 2205, but by granting that, you automatically gave a hardship to 2301.
If they don't open before...
Did you?
Because they have to be 500 feet.
But they, why...
But it's still who gets it.
Why didn't they start sooner?
So the staff...
They're already going through the process.
So, I mean, are we, are we then thinking that, I mean, because they applied, they did, they're going through the same process, you know? Of course, they, I don't even know if they realize that this is even happening, you know? So, I mean...
I think they're very much aware of the other establishment within the buffer zone.
They received their special use permit a month after this property did.
And they chose to receive with the knowledge that they had already received their special use permit.
Okay. All right.
We let every, people call Bob and I and ask for properties prior to applying, usually prior to purchasing the property. And we have a map that shows all of the buffers, that shows where there are pending applications, and we inform them at that point.
So we shouldn't see anything like this again, because there will, we won't see one approved so close by the commission?
You may see some, I guess.
Okay.
Like, well, like, as Cassie and Bob indicated, anytime anybody applies for a special use permit, they inform them of any other potential addresses that might be within the setback, not just of other retail establishments, but any of the other sensitive uses we buffer out from within the ordinance, be it churches or schools or what have you. So staff does make that information available to any applicant coming in.
Just for the members of zoning, can the staff say how many have already been approved? That's what you're gonna get, the number?
Yeah, I have a list here. There have been 19 approved and one coming up probably at the end of this, or this month.
So that's what I'm saying, will, may occur again.
So, and that's 19 approved special use permits.
Special use permits, yes.
There are no licensed establishments within the city as yet.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry. I don't know the big words like you do. I'm gonna keep it.
There are no operational facilities at the moment.
So just to add to what Cassie said, though, in your, in your report there, there's also standards for judging an appeal, which is part of the zoning ordinance. There's a list of four there that talk about those standards, and those are the standards that you should use, so not every property may meet those standards.
Yep. You would have to judge each property by the two sections of the zoning code that are set forth there in your packet.
And the one thing by the standards that's concerning for me is hearing from the community of the two establishments and the A right there, the first standard. Do I need to read the standard?
I'm not sure what you...
The part right here, it says, "In harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood, and what the neighborhood association provided in their concern was the work that they have, the work that they have done to sort of foster a sense of community." And I don't, if we, if we approve it, they're saying, the neighborhood association's saying, having two marijuana establishments within their, in their community would necessarily harm, that would actually interrupt that harmony.
Northmore is way down.
Okay, okay.
Northmore is down Delaware and that area.
Okay.
Actually, they go all the way to the river, don't they, Northmore?
Yeah.
I didn't see the picture, I'm sorry.
Looking at that map, they go all the way to the river.
Oh, do they now?
Yeah. So they've expanded. I'm not, I'm not sure a neighborhood association sets the standards for development in our community. Much, in fact, you have a master plan in the city that establishes that kind of stuff. And even though, and it's interesting, because they use the, you know, the, they're using the, they're saying the 500 feet is what we should be voting on, and when I read this, and, but again, we don't have that same standard. That's kind of an above and beyond standard, I mean, that we have for that.
And other sensitive uses that we require buffers from within the ordinance, residential property is not one of them.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. So, okay. You have any further questions for our presenter here?
Mr. Meeks, if this is, the waiver is approved, one of the biggest things that I'm always interested in, when I hear about the establishments of our marijuana establishments in our city, is how they give back to the community. One, the beautification of the facility, I see that removing those gas tanks, that's a really great opportunity. You said you have multiple establishments. What do you do within the community to support that community?
Yeah, so we establish, thank you for the question. We establish a percent of our profits that we give back, so it's in the 2% to 3% range. And so we give back there, and we have giveaway turkeys, you know, 100 turkeys on Thanksgiving, and we just do a bunch of miscellaneous things in the current facilities that we have in Muskegon and Burton, and we'll continue. And obviously, we're gonna hire Saginaw residents first, that's very important to us, and love to be, become a part of the community. And when asked to do things like a Halloween drive, and we'll go to Meyer, and we buy a couple hundred dollars' worth of Halloween candy for, we did that last year. So we'll do, contribute any way we can that, when asked upon.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion? This will require a roll call vote, and each, right? And each member needs to state what their reasonings for granting the variance, if it is a, do we vote, do we do a vote up first, and then go back and do the roll call?
I think you have to get a proposal.
If it's voted down...
You can just do the roll call, just as a matter of, you know, not having these gothic votes. And we do that frequently in planning commission, just do the roll call, let this figure away.
Because it's gonna require a roll call vote, because we have to give an explanation.
Yeah.
Each member.
Especially if you're voting in the negative, correct?
If you're voting in the negative. But if you're voting in affirmative, you do not have to then?
Well, I don't think he's gonna be worried about appealing the question if everybody votes in the affirmative, so...
However, if we vote in the affirmative, we still may want to give the reasons why that the future requests, you know, may use the language that we give, you know?
Correct. Might as well. All right. Brandell Adams?
I vote to approve the variance. I believe that 2205, complying with these provisions, can secure no reasonable return, given the amount of money they invested. Also, it's not the result of their own actions, they applied first, whereas the other company applied with full knowledge that 2205 would be there, so I affirm.
Dennis Browning?
I'm gonna vote affirmative, based on the hardship is particularly to the property of the appellant, the hardship was created by the addition of another applicant. So I'm gonna vote yes.
George Copeland?
I'll be voting in the affirmative, just realizing, as my previous colleagues have stated, the hardship, but then also the opportunity that this presents to the city of Saginaw, especially as we redevelop and look at our master plan, this will fall in line in supporting our community.
Bruce Gale?
Affirmative. I can't say enough about the fact that we're gonna take an eyesore right out of that drive home.
Jack Nash?
Affirmative. And because the hardship was caused by the other appellant, by the other entity.
All right. Motion has been approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
All right.
We'll make you proud.
It's okay.
I believe you will.
We're very impatient to see progress. We talk about it, but we need to see progress, and so I'm sure we will. Then, do I need a motion to close the hearing then on this one?
Nope, already did it.
We did it because we voted.
You did it before the motion to approve.
Yep, okay. It's a little bit different doing this. Okay. We're now moving on to our second public, you don't have to stay. Bless your heart, you don't have to stay.
Give her the blessings.
And the other gentleman, it's too bad you got here early.
Thank you.
You certainly don't have to stay for that.
Good day.
All right. Public hearing for case J-21-0087. Public hearing to decrease the, help me with pronouncing it.
Fenestration.
Fenestration.
So essentially, that's...
Requirement for, hang on, for 1841 North Michigan. And a fenestration is basically windows?
The exterior glazing of the building, yep, the windows.
The exterior glazing of the building, yep, the windows. Do you want me to explain more?
Does everybody understand that? When I think of glazing, I'm glazing tiles and stuff like that. Now, all of a sudden, I'm thinking, what the heck is this?
So, the architectural fenestration definition, which my colleague over here has printed out.
I had to look it up myself.
Refers to the openings in the building envelope, including the installation of windows, doors, and skylights. Windowed doors and skylights are all vital components of the building envelope. The process of including these openings in the building is known as fenestration. So in the entire Riverfront Mixed Use District, there is a requirement to have a certain amount of fenestration depending on what section they're in. And that's essentially making so that somebody walking along the street can see inside the building. It brings activity, it's just a urban development.
Yep.
Regular urban development requirement.
And this really applies for the Riverfront Mixed Use?
Yes, only for that district.
How about hearing first?
Okay. Well, do we have someone to speak, reference the eighteen forty-one?
Yes, good evening.
Troy, Michigan, yes.
Paul Weisberger, one-one-zero West Maple Road, Troy, Michigan. I'm appearing this evening, normally we'd have our architect here, but he has decided to have one of those summer vacations. They're entitled to them from time to time. So I drew the short end of the straw here and I'm appearing, but glad to be here. This is a Walgreens mini version, it's twenty-nine, it's like twenty-six hundred square feet. Walgreens used to build what you would know as the typical Walgreens, which is a larger box, twelve thousand, fourteen thousand square feet.
And that would be located one block away.
Exactly.
That's the typical.
That was the typical. That was back when they felt they could, they needed to compete and wanted to compete in the convenience store business where you had chips and toilet paper and you name it. You can go up there and get a flashlight if you wanted to. I sent my wife today because down south, we had massive storms, they barely made it here. So I told her to go to Walgreens and get the flashlight. But that is not the model that works for them anymore. They've now, they're now rolling out across the country and we're handling the Michigan market. A much smaller concept, it's almost thirty to forty percent pharmacy. So what you see is the pharmacy in the back doesn't really diminish, they just are diminishing what they call the front of the store. So that's kind of the basis for what's occurring there. Most of the time, people say, well, what's gonna happen to the Walgreens store that they're leaving? That's not really your purview, but just to answer the question, usually it's pretty good real estate and people take it over, whether it's a Family Dollar or Dollar Tree. Walgreens picked pretty good property in the past.
It is a good location.
Yeah, so, you know, in other words, we don't feel like we're leaving the city in a lunch here with the, like, a bad piece of property to try and refill. But, so, the, the, the look of the building is uniform. It's almost, I wouldn't call it like franchise, but it's replicated across the country. But the number one concern that Walgreens really has, and I talked to the area manager, is, and I think we can appreciate it, is they've got, they've got drugs inside. They've got opioids, they've got everything you can imagine under the sun. They are very concerned about security wherever they go. And it's not a type of an operation where they're dying to have a lot of fenestration, which is a word I had to look up earlier today before I came here. So, I refer to it as glazing, but they said, no, fenestration can be windows and doors. So here we are talking about windows and doors. But on the east side of the building, which is the main, main side of the building, and that faces the main drag, you know, we've got a pretty sizable amount of windows. In the Walgreens, you'll see in their stores, they have inside those windows, they do have a drop-down steel curtain, if you will. That's because it's ripe for driving a car through, for breaking in, or for inviting criminal activity. So if you have the steel curtain, then it's obviously gonna hopefully deter people from attempting to do that. On the south side, which is the other elevation that's referenced in this variance, we've got a few transom windows, I'd call them, ones that are higher up, which means you can see through them, but they're, they're meant to be harder to get to. You'd have to bring a ladder to get through them. And so, that's the way Walgreens has kind of set up their store. And we're hoping, because of the unique nature of the use, you know, this is not a cell phone store or a clothing store, this is a drugstore, it sells drugs, sells narcotics, good, bad, or otherwise. And we want to make sure that we've got the right security there. So we're respectfully requesting that because of the unique nature of the use, that we're allowed to deviate from your fenestration requirement. And that's about it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and I'll ask if there's anybody else that wants to speak on that. It doesn't appear that there is, but required to do that one more time. Is there anyone else to speak, reference the variance at eighteen forty-one North Michigan? Being none, then we're gonna move on?
A motion to close the public.
We need a motion to approve, to close the public portion of this.
Move to close the public portion.
Second.
Then moved in second, is there any further discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries then. Public hearing is now closed. We will need a motion to approve the variance to decrease the fenestration requirement to allow a Walgreens to be developed at eighteen forty-one North Michigan.
Move to approve case J twenty-one zero-zero-eight-seven. Back in.
Then moved in seconds, there any, we can now go into discussion if you have any questions. Now would be the time for that.
This is a question for staff, when they had the fenestration requirements, there was no, nobody thought about the security issues he's gonna have with the drug laws by the DEA and that wasn't even considered when they did that, correct? Or do you know?
I don't believe that that was considered an issue back then, no.
No, I think in the Riverfront Mixed Use area, the, the concept was really, if you're inviting in commercial, you know, the thought is having this sort of stacking level of development with maybe commercial on the bottom and apartments. And so, if you, if you have boutiques and things like that, you do want to have windows to invite customers inside, but you are correct, I don't think when those plans were being put into place that the, the thought of potential security issues for sensitive products was really thought of.
I think there's really stringent laws about drugs on premises and your security issues and serious stuff.
Any other comments?
Okay. Do you think there's enough parking at that location?
You asked to meet the ordinance.
They went above and beyond the ordinance.
Okay. Okay.
We're the proud recipient of a unanimous approval at the planning commission.
Yes, I've been working with them quite a bit, primarily Alex.
I just know the location, I just think it's kind of tight, but if you know the rules.
They've been very good to work with, way out of Walgreens comfort zone and they've kind of mended it around a lot of our ordinance. This was the one thing that they really could not meet.
Gotcha.
Don't they have a house next door too that's gonna go down?
Yes, so they ended up purchasing a second lot.
So they got enough parking for that.
And then they're, whatever your ordinance requirements would be, they would, they're very stringent on, you know, the ops team, making sure they got enough parking.
Questions, questions? No other questions? Alright, we'll call for a vote then on this case number J twenty-one zero-zero-eight-seven, located at eighteen forty-one North Michigan.
Do you want me to do a roll call?
We're ready to vote.
Alright, Brandell Adams?
I'm gonna vote to approve the variance because of the unique nature of the use of this location and for security reasons.
Dennis Browning?
I vote affirmative based on the hardship in particular to this property of the applicant and for purposes of the security for that.
George Copeland?
I vote in the affirmative due to the reasoning that my colleagues have provided thus far.
Bruce Gale?
Affirmative, there's plenty of reasons for that over the T-dos.
Jack Nash?
Affirmative, due to the security and what kind of business is going there.
Alright, that was approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Safe trip back.
Thank you.
Hope the power's on when you get back.
It wasn't when I left.
Oh, boy. They got hit pretty hard down there? Yeah. Alright. Cancel that guy's vacation.
He's actually out of Colorado, so I saved him a picture.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Here, look at these, forgot to sign them. Some of you probably haven't, I've been filling these out.
Nice.
How did you do that?
I've just been typing under names. So you would just sign under one of the board members.
She's gonna be used to this signing.
I know, I'm about to have to sign.
I know, she's taking everything.
You're secretaries, so don't forget to sign the secretary spot. And then you're the presiding officer.
Is there any other old business, is there any other old business?
Which one do I, where do I sign? Secretary.
Is there any other old business? Being none, I need a motion to approve, or to adjourn?
So moved.
They moved in second, any discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?